Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, June 27. We began with a work session at 7:00, continuing at our regular session at 8:00. And as is always the case, you can pick up our meetings by sharing the Zoom link that's available at Pleasantville-NY.gov, both for the Village Board Meeting and other boards and commissions that are meeting. We are in the hybrid mode, which is to say we're meeting here in the meeting room at 80 Wheeler Avenue, and you are welcome to be here with us. But we also offer the option for you to watch or participate via Zoom. Again, Pleasantville-NY.gov publishes the links to our meetings. So our next regular meeting is two weeks from today on Monday, the 11th of July. Monday, the 11th of July will be the Monday after the Pleasantville Music Festival. So let me just start by that. July 9th is the 16th Annual Pleasantville Music Festival. We very, very, very much encourage folks to take a look at the website, PleasantvilleMusicFestival.org, or dot com, I guess, PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com. Take a look at the lineup, take a look at the activities. 16 bands, three stages, a whole day of activity with all kinds of interesting stuff in vendor village, food stuff, not-for-profits. A big shout out to Northwell Health, the owner and operator of both Phelps Hospital in Tarrytown and Northern Westchester Hospital in Mount Kisco. Northwell has signed on as our lead presenter, so very, very much appreciate the support of Northwell Health, and they will be onsite on the field, doing some stuff about Northwell and planning some fun activities of their own. So I very much encourage folks to get tickets in advance. You can do them on the website. You can also buy them during business hours at our rec center on Marble Avenue, where you avoid any online transaction fees if you so choose. But it will be a big advantage to have tickets in hand before you come, and you won't end up stuck in a line of any kind. It's looking like a really good day. So July 9, Pleasantville Music Festival. A couple other things to mention. As perhaps you have noticed, we've made some modest modifications to the south end of Memorial Plaza, associated with a long-term plan to create diagonal parking, which we've created on one side already. Associated with that is the Saturday Farm Market has moved to the south end of the Plaza, and that has worked out, I think, pretty well. That move was required by the fact that we are within, I hesitate to say how long, within unimaginable, not too long, to see our Manville Road project launched into construction. That's a revision and pedestrian safety project that goes from Grand Street up to Tompkins. What is your report, Eric, so I don't overpromise?
Sure. Right now, we're waiting on a highway work permit to be issued by DOT since it's their roadway. The contractor has submitted that a couple weeks ago, so right now, we're waiting on that turnaround time. So we're trying to work our contacts at DOT to move it to the top of the pile. But once we get there okay, then the contractor is free to start. So we're at the last step here.
So when that happens, a bunch of things are happening, and you can take a look at the drawings, which are still up online at Pleasantville-NY.gov in the left column in the Special Projects tab.
Sure.
It involves widening the street at Memorial Plaza, where it abuts Manville Road and Grand Street, to create a right-hand turn lane, new signalization, eventually closing the slip lane out of the commuter side of Memorial Plaza after that new right-hand turn lane has been created. And then improvements all the way along, and I think what will turn out to be really substantial improvements in the pedestrian conditions, crossing that very wide area of Manville at Wheeler and Washington, sort of healing what has been a very substantial divide for a really long time. So good stuff going on there. I just want to also remind folks that COVID remains active. Today, the county feeds us the state data by community, and today, we had 17 new positives. That's the highest number of new positives I've seen in quite a while, and that number is obviously a fraction of reality, because anybody who home tests and tests positive never ends up in the state system. So all I mean to say is, we're obviously all learning to live with this difficult situation, but it ain't gone, and just reporting the news today was more positives than we've seen in quite a long time. So keep an eye out for that and plan your life accordingly, based on how you want to proceed. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is that the county, as I have mentioned before, has been spending quite a bit of time examining the future of Westchester County Airport, considering a lot of aspects of the operation of the airport, and seeking public participation. And they have scheduled a meeting that is taking place on July 6 at 6:00 p.m. It's a virtual hearing. You don't have to go, you can log in. If you're interested in doing that, they ask you to register in advance, and you must register in advance if you wish to speak. But you are also given the opportunity to register in advance and issue a written comment if you wish. You can get to that, there's a very, very long URL, but if you simply Google "on the horizon, Westchester," that will get you to the page. So you could, I'm sure, do the same at WestchesterGov.com, but the virtual hearing is called "On the Horizon, July 6, 6:00 p.m." Anybody else have something to add to the reports?
Just reminding everyone that we're working, the Chamber of Commerce is working on getting vendors for Pleasantville Block Party, that we're looking to do its event kind of like we did last year for Oktoberfest, but instead, we're going to call it Pleasantville Block Party. It's going to be on Saturday, October 1st. We are looking to close down Wheeler again, also looking to close down Washington Avenue from the Manville to the end where the fire station is, and also the parking lot coming in from Bedford Road, that's right behind Holy Innocent. So we're currently discussing with different vendors, specifically members of the Chamber of Commerce, to see specifically where one will go, and we'll update everyone on that as this progresses.
Thank you, Paul. I should have mentioned upfront, all five of us are participating in the meeting. Four of us here, David and Jimori, is, as you can see, participating via Zoom. The flexibility to allow people to do that when their schedule would otherwise be difficult is a great benefit of the reconsideration the state provided. David, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I have one brief update, which just is that the library design team has essentially finalized the master plan. So this is a potential renovation for the library. It's in costing now, so I'm hoping that we'll have a preliminary, very preliminary estimated cost in the next two weeks or so, and at that point, the library group will come to the Village Board as well as to the town to discuss options.
So let me say, David has been right in the middle of this, as he is ideally suited to be, because of his professional life involving consulting to libraries. But I and a bunch of others had a preview of what's proposed, and I was really, as I think everybody was, very, very much impressed. Footprint of the library doesn't change one iota, but the quality and versatility and environmental excellence of the space, I think, gets a big jump. So here's hoping the numbers come back at a viable level. Really, it's exciting stuff. So, all right, anybody else, announcements of any kind? All right, before we get into our, we have a simple public hearing and then our resolutions. Prior to doing that, is there anybody from the public, either present or virtually, that had something to say on any subject? No takers on that? So is there a motion to open the public hearing concerning introductory local law 5 of 2022 to create Chapter 9 of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville concerning best value procurement?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome to the thrilling public hearing on this subject. We foreshadowed that in a conversation last week. Eric, you want to give us the thumbnail sketch?
Sure. So currently, our village code and procurement policy mandates that we select vendors and contractors based on lowest responsible bidder. It's a pretty rigid definition. Many municipalities, especially during this time with long lead times, material delays, have also added best value procurement to their procurement policy, which was a recommendation by the village attorney. We can now award contracts based on best value, which also takes into account not only price, but also availability, how quickly they can get the material, and so on and so forth. So it's another arrow in our quiver to be able to get projects done in a timely manner, which time is money. So this was recommended by the village attorney. Many municipalities already have this in their code, and it's probably about time we do the same.
So and just to be clear, the process is pretty well described, and it's by no means a free-for-all. There has to be a pretty exhaustive effort and a clear documentation of the basis upon which one might choose a higher price as best value as compared to a lower price. So it's certainly nowhere near a free-for-all. It's a very careful and responsible process. Comments, questions? Comments of any sort from our listeners or attendees? There being none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, public hearing closed, and we have a resolution to approve that on our agenda shortly. So with that, we'll launch into our resolutions. Let me share my screen. David will include you in that loop. Okay?
Thank you.
Hold on here. Paul, number 178.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby approves amendments of the regular meeting held on June 13, 2022. Description as the minutes can be found in the attachments to this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections to the June 13 minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 179, Nicole. You always get these.
Yes. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending in 2022, effective May 31, 2022, as listed below. Budget transfers of the general fund, $341.50 from youth program outside services to youth programs part-time. Budget transfers of the water fund, $59,422.50, inter-fund transfer to general for water purification equipment, $33,020.57 inter-fund transfer to general for filtration plant variable, $28,501.80 inter-fund transfer to general, filtration plant fixed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, you just want to touch on the water fund expenses?
Sure. So the equipment transfer is our share of a boiler replacement project at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant that we partially own with the town of Newcastle. The variable and fixed pricing, that is pricing that we pay for the fixed costs associated with the plant itself, along with the cost of water and the expense to treat the water. What ends up happening is, we run on a fiscal year that starts June 1, ends on May 31. The town runs on a calendar year, so what they project does not always equal out. So throughout the year, New York City increased the cost of water, and other increases happened, so this is basically doing a closeout and what we owed. And as we talked about, all the expenses have gone up on the fixed and variable side.
Understood. Further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, virtual David, number 180.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending 2023, as listed below. $1,000 from a 1994 contingent to 85132435 mechanical mechanic tool allowance. The appropriate fund balance for general fund, $100,000 from a 9950.901 transfer to capital to Nantahagan Pond weirer system project, $21,735, 83110108 police admin sick retirement payout to retirement payout, unused sick time, increase in revenue and expenses, the capital fund, $100,000 from inter-fund transfer from refuse fund to Nantahagan Pond weirer system project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, why don't you describe the weirer system?
Sure, so...
That being a word that lots of folks will not recognize.
That's right. So right now, in order to lower the water level at Nantahagan Pond, we actually send staff members in to remove wooden slats. This weirer system would make that more of an automatic process, and so we've engaged the Bruin Engineering to design that, and we'll go out to bid. We're cost estimating that to be below $100,000, but with a conservative estimate, that's what we're going to move at this point.
And we're in the habit of lowering the pond in anticipation of a storm to increase the detention capacity that that pond has during a heavy storm. It's not clear that that is a massive benefit, but it certainly is some benefit, and the capacity to do this without sending guys potentially in a rainstorm into that slat system is clearly a good move.
How is it controlled?
It's going to be like a wheel.
It's a mechanical thing. There's no app for it, let's put it that way.
Right, but does someone still has to go there?
Somebody has to still go there, but not climb down.
I see, okay.
Yeah, yeah. They'll stand on the outside and be able to...
Okay. I thought I heard the word automatic, that's why I was confused.
No, yeah, no, no, they still have to go there.
It's just an easier, more easily controlled system.
Correct, yeah.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 181, Michael.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated June 27, 2022, for fiscal year 2022, covering check numbers 104122 to 104123 and 104125 to 104151. From the general fund, $40,132.83. From the water fund, $202,932.10. From the capital fund, $6,750. From the refuse fund, $590.62, for a total of $250,405.55.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the check registered? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, Paul, number 182.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves establishment of petty cash fund in the amount of $5,000 for the purpose of making change at the front gate office of the Pleasantville Music Festival on Saturday, July 9, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I can report that it is a very carefully managed process, but when you have a whole lot of people potentially paying cash and needing change, you need to be ready to achieve it. So comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, 183, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated June 27, 2022, for fiscal year ending in 2023, covering check numbers 104124 and 104152 to 104265. From the general fund, $399,551.98. From the water fund, $45,623.81. From the capital fund, $323,778.97. From the refuse fund, $26,746.73, for a total of $795,701.49. And the payment of claims is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So just to be clear, we have two of these, because our fiscal year ended, end of May, and new fiscal year began June 1, and so there are payment of claims referring to the fiscal year that just ended, and these which refer to the fiscal year that just started.
And just one quick comment, the capital fund, that $323,000, that is our portion of the pump for the Inningwood Pump Station, which the village borrowed probably just over a decade ago, the Millwood Water Treatment Plant, and that finally closed out, and we were invoiced for that work.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so...
All right, other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, virtual David, 184.
Whereas the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees desires to adopt a seasonal ban on fuel-powered motorized leaf blowers from May 15 to October 1 each year, and whereas the proposed action is an unlisted action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, and whereas the Board of Trustees has reviewed Parts 1 and 2 of the full environmental assessment form, and whereas the Board of Trustees held a duly noticed public hearing on the proposed local law on May 19, on May 9, 2022, and continued the public hearing on May 23, 2022, and June 13, 2022, at which time, all those interested had an opportunity to be heard, and whereas the public hearing was closed on June 13, 2022, and whereas the Board of Trustees is fully familiar with the proposed local law, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, in accordance with SECR and upon review of the full environmental assessment form and all other materials prepared, hereby adopts the attached negative declaration of the proposed local law, finding that the adoption of the local law will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby adopts introductory local law 3 of 2022, which upon its passage will become local law 4 of 2022, to amend Chapter 123, Section 3, Chapter 123, Section 5, Subsection L, and to create Chapter 123, Section 5.1 of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville concerning seasonal limitations on fuel-powered motorized leaf blowers. There are four attachments, including the local law.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Nicole, do you want to comment about the timing of this?
Sure. I just wanted to ask a question quickly. So you sent us the draft of this law, but there's nothing in here that refers to the amendment of the weekend and holiday hours.
There is.
That's included in this.
Yeah, there is.
No, I just mean in the summary.
Oh, correct, correct. It's in the local law.
Okay, so I just wanted to make that clear, that there's also, part of this law is an amendment of the weekend and holiday hours, changing the window from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Do you want me to give an overview of how we...
You need to give overview of the whole law, but I think what's important to make clear is that it doesn't take effect in the next year.
Yes, so the part that I just referenced, the change in the weekend and holiday hours would take effect once this law is registered with the state, but the part pertaining to gas-powered leaf blowers would take effect in 2023. Yeah, so on May 15 of the following year.
Right, so folks have an opportunity to adjust to this and to plan ahead, and as Nicole calls a report, the state has a number of opportunities potentially.
Yes, so, you know, so I won't give too lengthy an overview, but I will say that this law is the culmination of sort of many years of discussion on this subject, and more specifically, this version has, we've had three public hearings to consider this, and there were certain revisions that were made. One of them was to put off the actual enforcement of this or enactment of this law to next year, which gives us a year to really get the word out, to communicate about people, to everyone what we're doing, and also gives people more time to prepare. And as Peter alluded to, in addition to the fact that there are similar regulations that exist in municipalities all throughout Westchester, New York State is now considering a number of proposals. One of them is a rebate program for electric-powered landscape equipment that would be at a higher grade than the kind of rebate program that we just had locally, and that would be helpful potentially to landscapers and to sort of larger outfits. There are also a couple of other laws that are less further along in the process. One is a seasonal ban that's similar, and the other is a proposed ban on the sale of gas-powered landscaping equipment, which would be analogous to what the law that was already passed in California. So that's just to give the sort of broader context of what's happening in the state. Anything else that we want to add?
So let me just make the point, which I think is, at this point, for anyone who's followed this, not only over these years, but in the last some months, there's no action that we will take that will be universally accepted by all, but by the same token, it's crystal clear, I think, to me, and I think I can speak on behalf of all of my colleagues, that we're talking about a problem that is a significant and problematic impact on lots of our neighbors in this community. And for that reason, we're trying to balance the needs, the rights of an individual to manage their property as they wish, but also the rights of neighbors to enjoy their property in the way they wish. We feel as though we've come to a compromise solution that at least reflects and respects all of those concerns. We join what I think now is a majority of the 45 communities in Westchester that has a law of this kind, and we certainly have not been deaf to the concerns that folks have expressed on all sides of this issue, and will remain open to that ongoing discussion. But I do think that the time has come to respect the concerns of those for whom the noise and impacts of leaf blowers have gotten highly problematic. Anybody else want to add anything to that? All right, since this, as we often do on matters that have engendered quite a bit of controversy, let's have a roll call vote. Paul?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Resolution passes unanimously.
Can I just add, thank you for everyone's participation in this conversation. As Peter said, you know, I don't think this fully satisfies everyone. There's been a lot of back and forth, but also thank you to everyone who has, you know, worked on this process with the Village Board.
All right, Michael, 185, things get boring from here.
Whereas under General Municipal Law 103, municipalities have the option of making purchase contract awards based on best value, which allows municipality to rely upon non-price performance criteria in awarding purchase contracts when the initial expenditure is higher than using a lowest responsibility bidder methodology. And whereas municipalities may elect to award purchase contracts which exceed the statutory dollar thresholds of General Municipal Law 103, to a responsive and responsible offer or on the basis of best value, a competitive offering, instead of to the lowest responsible bidder, New York General Municipal Law Number 103A. And whereas, in order to award contracts based on best value, a municipality must first pass a local law authorizing the use of best value to determine contract awards, as proposed by introductory local law 5 of 2022. And whereas a public hearing was held and closed on June 13, 2022. Sorry, wasn't that just today?
Yeah, we just did.
Yep.
June 27.
June 27, right?
Yeah.
Okay, friendly amendment. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby adopts introductory local law 5 of 2022, which upon its passage will become local law 5 of 2022, to create Chapter 9 of the Code of the Village of Pleasantville concerning best value procurement.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, 185, with the correction of that date?
Yes.
Motion approved. Back to you, Paul.
I feel like I just went to a law school event there, reading that one.
No, very good.
Maybe that's why I didn't go to law school.
I was going to say, theology professor turns out to be a lawyer at heart.
No, I couldn't, I couldn't make sense of it.
Paul, see if you can be a theology professor.
All right, all right. 86, right? 186, right?
Yes.
Okay, should make sure.
Whereas the Village, whereas the Village of Pleasantville previously entered into memorandum of understanding with sustainable Westchester to participate in a short-term extension of the electric service agreement, and to continue the village's participation in a community choice aggregation program in Westchester County, and where a sustainable Westchester will no longer pursue the short... and where our Sustainable Westchester will no longer pursue the short-term contract extensions, and has advised that a longer-term contract will offer advantages in the current market. And where our Sustainable Westchester is working towards establishing a new contract for the Westchester Power Electric Supply Service, and has updated the MOU, uh, which is the memorandum of understanding, and the associated ESA, the Electric Service Agreement, template to reflect the changes in the proposed solicitation. And where our Sustainable Westchester will issue a request for proposals to suppliers to provide energy to participating customers for the 2022 ESA. And whereas the electric power supply shall be awarded to an entity duly authorized to conduct business in the state of New York as an energy reserve, as an energy service company that procures electric power for eligible consumers in connection with the CCA program that meets the requirements specified in the MOU and the 2022 ESA, and that it is submitted by the lowest responsible bidder, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the 2022 RFP. And whereas the member of Sustainable Westchester and the participant in the CCA program, the village intends to continue to engage in the services of Sustainable Westchester as the program manager for the Community Choice Aggregation for the operation and maintenance of the program. Now there be resolved that the Village of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes a mayor to execute the revised memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Sustainable Westchester, subject to final review and approval by the village attorney as to form and substance in order to continue to participate in the CCA program in the Con Edison Territory. And be it further resolved that, so as long as the conditions set forth in the MOU are satisfied, the village board hereby authorizes the mayor to sign the 2022 Electric Service Agreement, subject to final review and approval by the village attorney as to form and substance. Be it further resolved, it's just gotta be, uh, updated, a typo right there, and the result, uh, that the village board hereby selects hundred percent renewable clean power product as a default product for its residents and small businesses. Be it further resolved that the village board hereby authorizes the mayor to execute any and all documents to effectuate the purpose of this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, uh, those of you who may have, uh, watched our work session, heard Nick Tedrow from Sustainable Westchester describing this circumstance, uh, I think, uh, if you have noticed in your mailbox in the last couple of weeks, you received a letter to this effect. Uh, long story short, it was expected by all that a new contract that would continue the Community Choice Aggregation Program without a break, uh, would have been long since resolved. But the instability in the electric markets meant that, uh, the prices were rising sufficiently fast that nobody could meet the terms of the bid, which, uh, when they were created, appeared perfectly reasonable. So, uh, Sustainable Westchester intends to be, uh, back with a new bid, uh, that they will send out in July, and it's hopeful, hope that, uh, in September, this will all be fixed. I can report, just speaking personally, that, uh, I think it's a great and, and valuable program, and, uh, it has allowed residents of the Village of Pleasantville, uh, to, to generate modest savings o- over the default Con Edison supply, and in the case of, uh, those who remained in our default, uh, renewable green energy product, uh, at a very, very tiny extra cost and compared to their regular Con Ed price, we've been able to support the green energy market. And, uh, those who may have heard Nick comment, uh, it's pretty clear that an increasing percentage, when there is an increasing percentage of renewable energy, uh, uh, in the overall energy picture, it will reduce the volatility associated with, uh, the oil and, and coal-based system and, uh, hopefully create a more stable environment going forward. So, for the near term, this seems like the way to go. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 187 Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes a six-dollar discount for festival volunteers and bands, non-headliner, headliners on tickets for family members, and a three-dollar discount for kids and seniors.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have offered discounts at various, uh, times off the general price, and this is similar to what we've done in various ways in the past year. Comments, questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. July 9th. Get yourself to PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com. Take a look at what's going on and, and buy a ticket. 168, uh, 188, I'm sorry. Uh, David?
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes a six-dollar discount for festival partner organizations to include Kiermore, Jacob Hurst, Tarrytown Music Hall, and Capitol Theater.
Is there a second?
Second.
Likewise, a shared marketing effort, uh, supporting that, uh, arts in Westchester in general. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 189 Michael.
Resolve that the Village Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator or designee to execute the custom sponsorship agreement for the Pleasantville Music Festival with Zwelling J. Henkels LLC, Partyline Tent Rentals, and the Capitol Theater.
Is there a second?
Second.
Typo correction, Henkels. There should be ELS, not LES. Uh, comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 190. Back to you, Paul.
Resolve that the Village Board of Trustees hereby authorize the village administrator to sign the agreement and attach her to with the Westchester County Department of Public Safety with respect to police academy instructor training.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pretty straightforward, and we depend on the county, uh, police academy for all kinds of training services. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 191 Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees in support of the Pleasantville Music Festival Saturday, July 9th, 2022, authorizes that no parking signs will be posted with restrictions and vehicular access to Hopper Street, Village Lane, and Elm Road will be in effect for Saturday, July 9th, 2022, from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And further resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the police chief to tow all vehicles violating the temporary parking and road restrictions.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think it should be Elm Street.
Yes.
Uh, so just to be clear, uh, both Hopper Street and Village Lane are the two prime access routes to the music festival, and, uh, only vehicles that are part of the festival that have previous authorization will be going down there. Uh, the issue on Elm Street is that, uh, that residential street has been, uh, completely inundated in some earlier years by folks trying to park there, and, uh, we seek to defend that neighborhood against that problem with this parking restriction.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 192 David.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise forbid for the rehabilitation of the west staircase at Village Hall.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Eric, that, that sounds grander than it is. It's scraping, patching, and painting, right?
Yes, yeah, it's, uh, work is long overdue.
Yeah, but it's not. The stair itself is fine, right?
Right, right.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, 193.
Michael.
Michael.
Yes. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise forbid for the replacement of emergency and exit lighting in Village Hall.
Is there a second?
Second.
Same story, Eric. We're updating our-
Yes, and, uh, when we did the building audit, uh, this was one of the recommenda- top recommendations we did.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 194. Back to you, Paul.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the appointment of Stuart Hanson as part-time court attendant, job class code 51, to serve the village justice court system effective June 28th, 2022, at the rate of twenty dollars per hour.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Welcome, Stuart. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, Nicole, 195.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the establishment of a perimeter for the Pleasantville Music Festival to include Hopper Street, Village Lane, and Marvel Avenue between Hopper Street and Village Lane, for the purpose of prohibiting unauthorized solicitation, peddling, and campaigning on Saturday, July 9th, 2022, between the hours of 10:00 AM and 10:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is similar to what we've done in the past to, to avoid the neighborhood of the festival, which is crowded enough as it is, uh, turning into an occasion where all kinds of other stuff is going on right at the edge. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 196 David.
Resolve the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hourly rate increase from eighteen dollars to twenty dollars for Mark Sareko Recreation Department effective April 6th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pursuant to Mike Newman's advice?
That's right. Yep, he, and he's also been taking on, uh, aftercare, or will be taking on aftercare as well.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, Michael, 197.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees, based upon the recommendation of the chief of police, hereby approves Sergeant Joseph Zane's attendance at an out-of-state armorer training located in Greenwich, Connecticut, to fulfill the role of Village of Pleasantville Police Department Glock Armorer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Out of state, but not very far.
Correct.
All in favor?
Glock Arm-
Aye.
Uh, aye, sorry.
Aye. Glock at the, ran that again.
I, I just don't hear armor-
Yeah.
That often these days.
I agree.
I think we all said aye, did we?
Yes.
Aye, okay. Motion approved. Okay. That's the last of our, uh, agenda items. Uh, is there any comment from the public before we return to work session and then to an executive session? I see none. Um, uh, so may I have a motion to end the regular session, return to work session to complete, uh, uh, our remaining work session items, and then to, uh, enter into an executive session on, uh, matters of real estate and litigation?
But one, one small announcement. I don't know any, if anyone's listening, but tomorrow is primary day for our, for our, um, not our village elections, but things, things that are above us, especially the state, uh, assembly and governors. So just a reminder to exercise your civic duty and vote.
Thank you for that. I should have said that upfront. I appreciate that, Michael, so.
Mr. Mayor, it's, uh, personnel and legal matters.
Also, uh, yes, I'm sorry. Personnel and legal matters. All right. Is there a motion to return to work session and then to go into executive session for the matters described?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.